Virginia Beach Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Hodson. I'm the chairman of the commission. Before we begin, I've asked Mr. Whedon to please lead us in prayer. This will be followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Don Horsley. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we give you praise, honor and glory just for today, Lord God. We just thank you, Lord, for awakening us, Lord, closing our minds, guiding us along our way. We thank you, Lord, for giving us two a year. Lord, we ask that you make your presence known in this room today, Lord God, as the decisions from our government are made to please the people, Lord, and to give you all the praise, honor and glory. We ask you to look to touch the minds and hearts and souls of everyone in this room individually and collectively. It's in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Whedon, for the prayer, and Mr. Horsley for the pledge. Next, I've asked Commissioner David Weiner to please introduce the members.
Thank you, Mr. Hodson. Going to start on the far end over there with Kay Wilson. Kay is our city attorney. Next is Jack Wald. Jack is a civil engineer, and he represents the Rose Hall District. Next is Dr. Karen Beersly-Kwanzey. She is the Assistant Director at St. Leo University, and she represents the Princess Anne District. Next is Don Horsley. Don is a farmer, and he is at large. Next is Ron Ripley. Ron is in real estate development and leasing, and he is at large also. Next is Jan Rosensky. Jan is the Secretary of the Planning Commission. She is in real estate management, and she represents the Centerville District. Next is Jeff Hodson. Jeff is the chairman of the Planning Commission. He's in real estate management, and he represents the Beach District. Next is Bob Thornton. Bob is the vice chair of the Planning Commission. He's in real estate management, and he represents the Lynnhaven District. Next is Dee Oliver. Dee is a funeral director, and she is at large. Sitting next to me is Mike Inman. He is an attorney, and he is at large also. My name is David Weiner. I'm in commercial sales. I represent the Kempsville District. Sitting on this side is Dave Redman. He is in real estate management, and he represents the Bayside District.
Solid, solid.
And then there is Barry Frankenfield. He's the director of planning.
Who is that?
Please introduce your staff, Barry.
All right. Thank you very much. On my left is my wingman, Ed Whedon, and we always try to characterize his outfit of the month, so he's gold and silver this month for the holiday season. So, thank you for being here. On the planning bench, we have Kevin Kemp, who's our new zoning administrator. Next to him is Carolyn Smith, our new planning administrator. Jimmy McNamara is next, and Jonathan Sanders in the front row. In the back row, we have John Mal... I don't know what you're doing there. Just kidding. That was a joke. He's not laughing, is he? All right. Don Malman's back there, but he's not in the group. So, next to him is Robert Davis and our city attorney Tobias Ostenhauer. Behind him is Brian Solis, our city transportation planner. Oh, it's Frank Malvin. That's my problem. Frank, welcome today.
Thanks, Barry. Thanks, David. Very, very nice job. Very well done. We have a cheat sheet for reading everybody's names and districts and their occupation, and we took David's away today and said, "You've got to do it from memory," which he should after a few years, but it's more difficult than it looks when you're sitting up here. The next order of business is the explanation of the rules, and we've asked Jan Rosensky to please go over those.
Thank you very much, Chairman Hodson. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its business. It's equally important that everyone treat each other and members of this committee with respect and civility. The commission requests that if you have a cellphone, that you please silence it or turn it off at this time. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules can be found in the front of the Planning Commission agenda for today. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdraws and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there's a request for a withdrawal or referral of any agenda item. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent agenda is the second order of business, and it is the consideration of the consent items which the Planning Commission believes are unopposed and have favorable staff recommendation. Regular agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Please note that action taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The Virginia Beach City Council then makes all final decisions with regards to these items. The commission thanks you for your attendance. We hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling like you have been heard and treated very. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This time, I'd like to offer a motion that we have added the election of officers to our agenda today.
Motion made by Commissioner Horsley for the election of officers, seconded by Commissioner Inman. That brings me to this order of business. It was brought to our attention in our informal today that the new slate of officers was presented, and Mr. Ripley, if you would please go over this.
If we could vote, please, on the motion on the table.
Let's vote on the motion first. I'm sorry.
Vote open.
Sorry, it's my last day on the job.
By a vote of eleven to zero, the commission has added the election of officers to the agenda.
Okay. The nominated committee met, and we wish to provide this slate of officers for 2017. Robert Thornton as chairman, Dee Oliver as vice chairman, and Jan Rosensky as secretary. That is our recommendation.
Is there a motion?
Pro mue.
Motion made by Commissioner Horsley, seconded by Commissioner Redman. Mr. Whedon?
Secretary.
Yes, sir.
I'll second it.
Dave Redman. Dave, Mr. Redman.
Vote open. By a vote of eleven to zero, the commission has elected Bob Thornton as chairman, Dee Oliver as vice chairman, and Jan Rosensky as secretary.
Congratulations. I look forward to passing the sledgehammer over to you, and I look forward to working with all of you for the next two years. And I would generally like to thank everybody up here and in the planning department and all the attorneys that we see just about every month for all their support that they've given me in this role for the last two years. I genuinely appreciate it. Thank you very much. So, the next order of business is to address those items to be withdrawn or deferred. If you have an agenda item to either be withdrawn or deferred, if you please come forward. It has been brought to my attention that agenda item number 14 is requesting a deferral. Is there any?
Oh, no. Number one.
I'm going to do that one in a second. Thank you. Agenda item number 14 is requesting a deferral. Is there any objections? It's also been brought to my attention that agenda item number one is requesting to be withdrawn. Is there any opposition to the withdrawal of this item? Hearing none. Is there a motion by Mr. Thornton?
Yes, I would move that item number one be withdrawn as requested and item number 14 be deferred indefinitely as requested.
Motion made by Commissioner Thornton. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Rosensky. Mr. Whedon?
Vote open. By a vote of eleven to zero, the commission has withdrawn item number one and deferred item number 14.
The next items we'll address are those to be placed on our consent agenda. The chairman-elect will handle this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Former chairman. This afternoon, we have 14 items on the consent agenda. The first item is agenda item number one. I'm sorry. It's number two. My mistake. It's item number two. This is an application from H. Frank Malvin and Randall Malvin-Duboy, trustees of the RE Malvin Land Trust, as applicant and owner. It's a subdivision variance, subdivision regulations, and so forth. Pinewood Drive. It's in the Beach Council District. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton, chairman-to-be and current chairman, Mr. Hodson. Members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Verdon, Virginia Beach attorney. I'm representing this application. The applicants are here this afternoon. All four conditions, as recommended by your staff, are acceptable to us on this property in Pinewood Gardens on the right or wrong side of the railroad tracks, but it isn't... it definitely is not Shadow Lawn, but it's a very, very nice neighborhood. We appreciate being on the consent agenda. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Thank you. The next item is item number three. This is an application from Fourth Shot LLC as applicant and Don Brockwell as owner for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor.
Would you want me to read it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead.
Well, you can...
No, no. You need to read that one.
I'm going to read it.
We've gotten out of...
We are.
Out of control.
We're just out of control. This is a request for a subdivision variance located at 419 and 421 Pinewood Drive. The plat that was created, this neighborhood, was recorded in 1926, and it also depicts the subject properties as four parcels, which are 32, 33, 34, and 35. Right now, each parcel is approximately 25 feet wide and somewhere between 3,000 and 4,000 square feet in size. The parcels are deficient in the required 50-foot minimum lot width and the 5,000-square-foot minimum lot area of the R5S district, so they are now non-conforming. The city records indicate that a duplex dwelling was constructed on the portions of parcels 34th and 35 in 1926, and the duplex is legally non-conforming, meaning that it was permitted when it was constructed. However, with the adoption of the zoning ordinance since in 1954, duplex dwellings are no longer permitted use in the residential district. So, a portion of the parcels of 32 and 33 were developed with single-family dwellings in 1965. The applicant is proposing to re-subdivide the four existing parcels into three parcels, lots A, B, and C, which will be redeveloped with a single-family dwelling. Lots A and B will front on Pinewood Drive, and lot C will front on an existing 15-foot-wide unimproved public alley. As the applicant has no intentions of improving the alley or using it for access to the lot C, a one-foot no ingress egress easement is proposed along the lot line adjacent to the alley, and a 15-foot ingress egress easement is proposed across the lots of A and B to provide vehicular and pedestrian access from Pinewood Drive to C. The proposed lots A and B both meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance with regard to lot width and the area and direct access to public street. The proposed one-foot no ingress egress easement along the property line adjacent to the alley on lot C will cause a deficiency in the standard in Section 4.4 of the subdivision regulation that allows lots to have direct access to public street. So, a subdivision variance is requested. This application is a great improvement to the existing dwellings that are on the street, and staff is recommending approval of this request, and so therefore, we have placed it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item is item number three. This is an application of Fourth Shot LLC for a conditional use permit, a tattoo parlor on property located at 1017 Laskin Road, the Beach District. Is there a representative here to speak on this matter?
There is. Donald Rockwell, the applicant.
Okay. Please come forth and state your name for the record.
My name is Donald Rockwell of 1511 Bowling Avenue in Norfolk, Virginia, and I accept the conditions in the application.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda?
You can be seated. Thank you.
Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Wald to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. This is a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor. The applicant requests a conditional use permit for the tattoo parlor within a 2,500-square-foot unit within an existing building along Laskin Road. Typical hours of operation proposed are from noon to 10:00 p.m. seven days a week. Services will include tattooing, sale of local art and clothing, and tattoo care products. The subject site, Zone B2 Community Business, contains other commercial uses, including a kitchen improvement operation and a retail business. No changes are proposed to the exterior of the building or to the layout of the site, with the exception of signage to be installed at the entrance, consistent with other signage on the building. The interior space will be renovated to accommodate the proposed tattoo use, including a waiting area, tattoo workstations, drawing area, an office, and ADA compliant bathrooms. The proposed business is located within an existing building along an existing commercial corridor of Laskin Road, and in staff's opinion, is compatible with the character of the surrounding area. Staff recommends approval, and the conditions are acceptable to the applicant. For these reasons, we have placed this application on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item is item number four. This is an application of Tallwood LP as applicant and owner, a conditional change of zoning from PDH-2 RF5D to conditional A18. It's located at 5704 Schoolhouse Road in the Centerville Council District. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, again, Eddie Verdon, speech attorney, representing the applicant. Mr. Andy Heatwool, one of the general partners, is here this afternoon. Appreciate Carolyn Smith and staff's work on this request, and appreciate being on the consent agenda. Thank you very much.
Thee.
Merry Christmas to everybody. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Rosensky to read this into the record.
Thank you. This is a request for rezoning of 7.88 acre site, and it's recommended for approval by staff. As the request is simply a request to separate the existing apartment complex under two different ownerships out of the larger parcel, no new units are proposed, and no changes to the approved proper plan from 1999 is requested. A deviation of the maximum lot coverage of 45% is sought with this rezoning as the reduction in the acreage results in lot coverage of 47.73%. The provisions of Section 221 of the zoning ordinance allows the city council to grant the division to the dimensional requirements for the good cause shown upon the findings. There is no significant detrimental efforts on the surrounding properties. Staff finds that this request to be acceptable and does not anticipate any negative impact as a result of this. In sum, the rezoning is predicated on the applicant's desire to refinance the apartment complex, and it's recommended for approval, subject to the proffers which have been provided by the applicant. Based on this information, the Planning Commission has placed this on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item, item number five, is an application of Janice P. Fucci for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor on property located at 515 Birdneck Road. Is there someone here to speak on this matter?
We're both here.
State your name for the record, please.
My name is Erin Flynn, and this is Janice Fucci, and Janice is deaf. So, I'm just here to kind of help her out today.
Okay.
Do you want her to state her name?
If she can.
Yeah. Go ahead and state your name.
Hi. My name is Janice Fucci.
Hello.
Thank you. Are the conditions that the staff has placed in this application acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. You may be seated. Is there any opposition to the matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Oliver to read this into the record.
Thank you. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor located at 515 North Birdneck Road. The applicant is requesting this conditional use permit to perform microblading within a hair care salon in an existing strip center on North Birdneck Road. Microblading is the process of using a series of small needles to place pigment into the skin but not as deep as tattooing. It is commonly applied to the eyebrow area typically, and it lasts for several years. Because of the zoning ordinance classifies this technique as tattooing, a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor is required. There will only be one employee at the site, and the hours of operation are proposed as 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Tuesday through Saturday. Staff finds this application, recommends it for approval, and therefore, we've placed it on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item number six. This is an application of Hogs Tooth Precision LLC.
Seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Seven.
Seven. Okay. Mine shows six.
We're here now.
We're here. Oh, okay. All right. Today is a confused day. Number seven. I'm sorry.
We're having a...
This is an application of Richard Scott Allen for a conditional use permit for a residential kennel on property located at 3769 West Neck Road. Is there a representative here to speak on this matter? Welcome.
How you doing?
Fine. Please state your...
My name's Scott Allen.
Okay. Are the conditions that are placed on this by the staff acceptable to you?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Thank you. Please be seated. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Kwazny to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. This is a request for a conditional use permit for up to 10 hunting dogs in the Princess Anne District at 3769 West Neck Road. The existing land use and zoning districts is single-family dwelling, cultivated fields, Ag 1 and Ag 2 adjacent to West Neck Creek. The applicant requests a conditional use permit for... The applicant currently owns six hunting dogs and would like to have up to 10. During the process for obtaining a kennel license for the dog, it's brought to the applicant's attention that a conditional use permit is required when there are more than four dogs. Previously, the applicant was unaware of this requirement for a conditional use permit, and hence why we're here today. There are three ordinances that apply to this application. Section 111 of the zoning ordinance defines a residential kennel as any premises upon which more than four dogs over six months of age are kept as pets or for hunting, exhibiting dog shows, or field and obedience trials. Section 401 of the zoning ordinance requires a conditional use permit for a residential kennel on a site zoned Ag 1 agricultural. And Section 223 says that the area the parcel uses as a kennel must be located 100 feet from the adjacent parcel if the kennel... unless the kennel is enclosed. This is a 71.66 acre site, mostly wooded, and as I said earlier, adjacent to West Neck Creek. The property contains a single-family dwelling and six kennels which are located in the back of the yard, one for each of the dogs the owner currently has. Each kennel is 6 feet wide by 10 feet long with a concrete floor enclosed by a 6-foot chain link fence. The request for a permit is located within the rural area, and the proposed request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's land use policies for the rural area and is considered compatible with agricultural uses and large lots which are characteristic of the surrounding area. According to city staff, this is consistent, as I said, with the area, and they recommend approval, and the Planning Commission places it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item is item number eight. This is an application of Mon Cherie Day School of the Arts for a conditional use permit for a family daycare home on property located at 3316 Lake Crest Road in the Rose Hall District. Is there a representative to speak on this matter? Good afternoon.
My name is Shree Knighton, and I am the owner of the property and owner of the business, and I agree with the conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Wald to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. The applicant requests a conditional use permit for family daycare home to care for up to 12 children within a single-family dwelling. The applicant has 13 years of experience working in the childcare field. The approximately 7,000-square-foot parcel is zoned R7.5 residential. The property has an enclosed backyard for children to play outdoors. Proposed typical hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. The applicant intends to employ one employee to assist in the operation of the family This request, in staff's opinion, is consistent with the comprehensive plan's land use goals for rural areas as it provides a valuable service for families in the suburban area. Staff recommends approval, and the applicant is amenable to the conditions. For these reasons, we have placed this item on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item is item number nine on the agenda. This is an application from Alexander P. Nab as both applicant and owner. It's a subdivision variance, and it is located at the 316 Mace Hill Street in the Beach Council District. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, and commission members. For the record, my name is Jan Anderson, and I'm a local attorney, and I represent the applicant. It is so nice to see so many familiar faces still on the commission, and it's nice to be in front of you today, especially on the consent agenda. We have reviewed the recommendation, the condition, and it is acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Inman to read this into the record.
The Cavalier Yacht Club occupies about 100 acres site at the end of Cardinal Road on Linkhorn Bay, and the conditional use permit for a 95-foot monopole tower was approved in 2008 and exists on the site. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit for a communication tower, again, a monopole, on 650 square feet of leased space at the club, and it will be... The equipment will be located on the ground level and includes three cabinets and a generator. The proposed tower would be 110-foot-high stealth monopole, and the proposed location is behind an existing maintenance building and a row of existing vegetation. Surrounding area of the city is currently deficient in network coverage for Verizon, and proposed facility will improve 700 LTE coverage in the immediate area, and the applicant has stated that the existing monopole, stealth pole, is capable of... is not capable of supporting the equipment necessary for the additional improvements to the coverage. So, the... dwelling, it was discovered that the subject lot was never properly put into record. As the subject lot is currently zoned R 10 Residential District, a minimum lot width of 80 feet and a minimum area of 10,000 square feet are required. The existing lot is deficient in both of these standards, as it has a lot width of 65 feet and a lot area of 9,800, 9,083 square feet. A subdivision variance to both lot width and lot area is requested. This, this, um, the comprehensive plan recognizes this to be in the suburban area. Staff is, recommends approval, and we have put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item on the consent agenda is item number 10. This is an application from Verizon Wireless as applicant and Cavalier Yacht Club as owner. It's a conditional use permit for a communication tower located at 1052 Cardinal Road in the Lynn Haven District.
Good afternoon, Chairman Hodgson, Chair-elect Thornton, and members of the commission. My name is Steve Romine, local attorney representing Verizon Wireless. Wanted to thank Jimmy McNamara and the staff for the help on this application. The nine conditions in the report are acceptable, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Enman to read this into the record.
The Cavalier Yacht Club occupies a, about 100 acre site at the end of Cardinal Road on Linkhorn Bay, and the conditional use permit for a 95-foot monopole tower was approved in 2008 and exists on the site. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit for a communication tower, again, a monopole, on 650 square feet of leased space at the club, and it will be, the equipment will be located on the ground level and includes three cabinets and a generator. The proposed tower would be 110 feet, 110-foot-high stealth monopole. And the proposed location is behind an existing maintenance building and a row of existing vegetation. Surrounding area of the city is currently deficient in network coverage for Verizon, and proposed facility will improve 700 LTE coverage in the immediate area, and the applicant has stated that the existing monopole, stealth pole, is capable of, is not capable of supporting the equipment necessary for the additional improvement to the coverage. So the, uh, location of the facility away, is away from the right-of-way and away from adjacent property. The applicant has provided photos, simulations depicting the view of the proposed tower from four locations around the site. The letter from a professional engineer states the tower will be designed to accommodate future antennas to be installed by wireless carriers and capable of withstanding winds of 121 miles an hour. So the staff recommends approval with nine conditions, among which are, of course, the height, the maintenance of the mature vegetation, and that it'll be developed in conformity with the plan package that they submitted to the staff with the application. And in light of the foregoing, the commission has put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item is item number 11. This is an application from Penny Marie Lousauskas as applicant and owner for a conditional use permit for a home-based wildlife rehab facility located at 1704 Grinestone Court in the Princess Anne District. Welcome.
Good morning, or good afternoon. I'm Penny Marie Lousauskas, and I agree with the conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Kwasny to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. This is an application for a conditional use permit for a home-based wildlife rehabilitation in the Princess Anne District for up to 12 reptiles and small animals, including possum, rabbits, squirrel, snakes, and turtles. It is located at 1704 Grinestone Court. The existing land use and zoning district is a single-family dwelling, R 10 Residential. The applicant is a volunteer home-based rehabilitation with a Category 2 license with Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. She currently rehabs mostly reptiles and small mammals that don't need to be placed outside. The applicant plans, there are a number of amenities that will provide additional security, both to the animals and to the neighbors. The applicant plans to construct a cage and have up to two outdoor crates or kennels in the southern portion of the backyard, which is heavily wooded and screened by a large high fence. As is typical of home-based wildlife rehabilitation, the injured or orphaned animals can be within the home for up to three months prior to release. All animals will be kept in cages inside the home and moved outdoors to crates and kennels when weather and rehabilitation permit. All animals will be transferred into the house from a vehicle or from the house into a vehicle when the animal is ready to be released via crates and/or plastic glass display boxes. The comprehensive plan recognizes this property as being within the suburban area. The proposed conditional use permit for a home-based wildlife rehabilitation on this site is compatible with comprehensive plan's land use policies for the suburban area. The purpose of the wildlife rehabilitation is to return injured or orphaned native animals to their natural habitat as quickly as possible, providing them with a reasonable chance to function and behave normally, and providing residents with a rehabilitation center that might be closer than the center we currently have, and is probably the goal of the city to eventually allow animals to go to that site. Section 242.3 of the city zoning ordinance provides specific standards, which are listed in the report, for home-based wildlife rehabilitation. The applicant is aware of these standards and agrees to them. Staff recommends approval, and the planning commission places it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Next item is item number 12. This is an application of Sandra Sawyer and Sandy's Angels Daycare for a conditional use permit for family daycare home on property located at 1956 Kempsville Road in the Centerville District. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Sandra K. Sawyer with Sandy's Angels Daycare, and I agree with all conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Rozinski to read this into the record.
Thank you, Chairman Thornton. The applicant requests a conditional use permit for a family daycare home in order to provide care for up to 12 children in her single-family dwelling. According to the applicant, the applicant has had 35 years of experience in the childcare field. The property has an enclosed backyard for the children to play outdoors. The proposed hours are 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Consistent with the provisions, section 501 B5 of the zoning ordinance, the applicant intends to employ one employee to assist in the operation of the family daycare. The proposed conditional use permit for this request, in staff's opinion, is consistent with the comprehensive plan use, land use policies for the suburban area with regards to compatibility to surrounding neighborhoods with respect to use, type, size, and relationship. The site is a large lot, has adequate room for client parking, has adequate room for children to play. Staff recommends the, uh, condition that the pickup and drop-offs be staggered, which is acceptable to the applicant. This will help alleviate some congestion in the right-of-way. For these reasons, the staff has placed this on the consent agenda, or places for approval, and we have placed it on the consent agenda with the applicant's acceptance of the six conditions that have been provided.
Thank you. The next item is item number 13. This is an application of Express Wheel Change and Tire Engineers for a conditional use permit, an automobile repair garage on property located at 213 Princess Anne Road in the Princess Anne District. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Nathan Lay, MSAPC Land Planner of Virginia Beach, represent the applicant. Who I have here with me, Mr. Andres Gustafson. All the conditions we are in agreement with, and we thank you for placing this on consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any opposition to the matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Horstley to read this into the record.
This is an application where the applicant wants to reopen an non-operational automobile service station that's been vacant for several, several years, in fact, with a like business to do automobile repair and tire work. The staff has reviewed some elevations that were sent in early, and they, the applicant has revised those, and consistent with what the staff had asked, to come in more in compliance with the, the local area and the rid-meal shopping area, so that the, the facility would blend in well with that shopping, shopping area, retail area. And also, the elevations were changed to relate to the height of the buildings, to be one-story buildings, as is already there, too. So, um, the applicant has accepted the 13 conditions that the staff has placed on the application. There was no opposition to this application, so with staff's approval, with this planning commission side, to put it on its consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item number 16. This is an application of Lynn Plaza Investments LLC for a subdivision variance, section 4.4B of the subdivision regs on property located at 845 Lynn Haven Parkway in the Rose Hall District. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman de Be, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. My name is Mike Knuckles, and I'm here representing the applicant. The conditions are acceptable, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any opposition to the matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Ripley to read this into the record.
This is a commercial parcel of property that's located up on Lynn Haven Parkway. It is a, it's a strip center and a, and a freestanding building on about 5.2 acres. The applicant wants to subdivide the property into 4.7 acres and a 21,500 and, uh, 21,593 square foot parcel. The, the issue here is lot width between the two parcels. They share an entrance. It's a shared entrance shopping center, so that will remain. Basically, the lot that, that's under consideration has 100 foot of width, but it doesn't have 100 foot of frontage. So the variance is for a 44-foot frontage and 100, and a 60, a 41-foot frontage and a 66-foot frontage splitting the frontage. The, the recommendation by the staff is for approval. The, the commission considered it, and we believe it, it should be on consent.
Thank you. The next item is item number 17. This is an application from the City of Virginia Beach to amend an ordinance of the, of the 2016 comp plan by amending the master transportation plan and primary roadway network plan map and policy document in regard to Lavender Lane and Centerra Way. And I'm gonna reverse this a little bit. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Brian Solis with the city to read this into the record.
Chairman Hodgson, members of the planning commission, my name's Brian Solis, I'm the city's transportation and transit planning manager, and before you today with item 17 is an ordinance to amend the 2016 comprehensive plan, specifically the master transportation plan, its primary roadway network map, as well as the policy document itself with regard to the urban areas section. The amendment is twofold. Number one is to remove a proposed flyover of Interstate 264 referred to in the Pembroke Strategic Growth Area's master plan as the Lavender Lane flyover. Depicted on the map, it's in the very center of this map as a circle with a cross through it to indicate that it's being removed. As a member of, as a part of a housekeeping measure, we're looking to add a flyover at Centerra Way, which is actually described in the Rosemont Strategic Growth Area's master plan, and that's, again, a kind of an item of housekeeping, actually show it on the map where it's already talked about in the text. With regard to the Lavender Lane flyover itself, I also wanted to mention, that's in the staff report that Jimmy McNamara did, that there is no intention to improve the undeveloped right-of-way between Broad Street and Virginia Beach Boulevard with Lavender Lane, but rather to keep it as, as green space. And with that, I'll stand by for any questions, but appreciate it being on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. The next item is item number D1. This is an application from Manusos Enterprises, Inc. as applicant and owner for a subdivision variance of section 4.4B of the subdivision regs located at 1337 Ferry Point Road in the Kempsville Council District. Welcome.
My name is Demetrius Manusos, and those conditions are acceptable to me.
Thank you.
Would like, like to thank you for doing what I think we asked you to do last meeting and for actually putting the, the pen to paper and coming back with the elevations for that property, so.
Yes.
Thank, thank you for doing that.
So I did.
Thank you.
Any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair has asked Commissioner Weiner to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. This is a request for a subdivision variance. The application was deferred at the August 10, 2016 Planning Commission hearing at the request of the applicant to revise their proposal from three lots to two lots. The application was deferred again by the Planning Commission on October 12 on a public hearing to provide the applicant more time to submit and update proposed site layout elevations of the proposed dwelling units. Lot 5A was, was created as a 5,000-square-foot parcel and is not part of the request. Lot 5B, the subject site, currently exists as a 33,912-square-feet parcel with a lot width of 78 feet. The site, Lot 5B, is currently configured and meets all the dimensional requirements of R 5D Residential Duplex District as set forth by the zoning ordinance and design standards of the subdivision regulations. The existing lot width of 75 feet allows either a duplex or single-family dwelling to be constructed by right on Lot 5B. The applicant, the applicant requests a subdivision variance to section 4.4 of the subdivision regulations to subdivide Lot 5B into two parcels. As Chairman Hodgson says, we appreciate you doing that and coming back to us with the elevations, and they have been proposed, the elevations of both proposed single-family dwellings on, in site layout have been submitted. This comprehensive plan identifies this as being in the suburban area. Staff recommended approval, and we have put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you, David. Mr. Chairman, that is the last item on the consent agenda. I would like to move that items number 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 16, 17, and D1 be approved.
15.
15, we're gonna hear, I think.
Oh, we are. You're, I'm sorry, you're correct. You're correct. Yes, you're correct. Mr. Ripley.
I would like to abstain on item number four. I have an ownership interest in that property.
Anybody else? Motion made by Vice Chair, Mr. Redmond.
I'm trying to find the appropriate one, and it, uh... It was the, uh, the one that Mr. Knuckles appeared on for the subdivision, uh, I mean, the, uh, variance to the...
16, Mike.
Pardon?
16.
I'm abstaining from that.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Mr. Redmond.
I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Commissioner Thornton for the consent agenda items with the abstentions noted, and seconded by Commissioner Redmond.
Mr. Redmond abstained from item 16?
Right.
On scene, sure.
Good thing we don't take ourselves.
Definitely at one meeting, D's gonna change.
I vote 11 to the open. Let me ask you to pick this up. 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 16, 17, D1. The abstention is noted on item four and agenda item 16.
I'd like to thank Jan Anderson and all the other applicants for coming down today. We had a matter on the consent agenda. These items will now be scheduled for the city council's agenda, and I'll ask Jan to please call our first item to hear.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, please, Mr. Enman, if, if Mr. Enman would please note his reason for abstaining?
Yes, um, I, my firm has a, a relationship with the owner of the property.
Thank you. All right, thank you. The first item to be heard today is item number six, Hogs Tooth Precision LLC, which is an application for a conditional use permit, home occupation firearm sales for property located at 1247 Princess Anne Road, District 7, Princess Anne. An applicant for the, can you come forward and state your name for the record, please?
Hi, I'm Franz Lee with Hogs Tooth Precision LLC.
Okay, and can you tell us about your application?
My application, I, I wasn't aware that there was any opposition to it until last night, and I have since spoke with Mr. Brock, who is one of the people who wrote the letter, I guess, to the, to the council. I've already gone through all the requirements for federal FFL application. They're just waiting on the conditional use permit from the city. In Mr. Brock's letter, he, some of the things that he is concerned about are already governed under Virginia Beach laws, such as discharge of firearms. There would be no discharge of firearms on the property. I told him I've lived there for 10 years, I've never discharged a firearm on my property. It's not gonna change now. One of the other issues that he had, that he had some concern with was the parking. I've got a driveway that's over 150 feet long. I've got, it's in Punggol, for those who aren't aware. I'm gonna deal with one person at a time. I have ample parking. Let's see, I, I told him, if anything, there's even more, I guess, leverage that he has in his concerns about conditional use, simply because I don't only have to abide by the city of Virginia Beach, I've gotta abide by federal and state laws as well. You know, there's over 114 that I know of FFL holders in Virginia Beach, and of those, I only know of three where weapons are discharged on the property, and those are all places where there's a, a gun range on sight. Part of the issue that Mr. Brock had was that, I guess, he's, you know, his family's owned property in Virginia Beach for, since the 1800s, and some of that stuff has been divided up over years, and there have been conditional use permits for other people that were later down the line taken to the conditions that weren't in the, in the original CUP. I've read the conditions on my CUP. I have absolutely no problem with any of those conditions. And that's, uh, that's basically it. I don't know if he's still opposed. I, I spoke to him on the phone, he seemed to feel much better about it. He did say that, you know, somebody's word is only their word until you see it in place. Well, unless I have the CUP, I can't prove otherwise.
Thank you. Any questions?
I, I think the reason, Mr. Brock, you know, normally when people do a, ask for a condition, apply for a conditional use permit, they go around and talk to the neighbors, and I don't think, I don't think you had done this.
Well, he leases out.
That's a, that's a, that's the first step that, you know, go around and get your And that's, that's, that's the first step that, you know, go around and get your neighbors on your side, and that's the first step. I think that's probably his main concern.
Yes, sir. As you can see there, I'm completely surrounded by the nursery.
Yeah. I know where you are.
And I did, and I did, I did go speak to them. And I spoke to everybody at the nursery and told them what was going on. What I didn't do is go speak to the person who actually owns that property that's leased, and that, that is my fault.
But you have talked to Mr. Brock now and...
Yes, sir. He and I actually sat right next to each other this morning at the, at the pre-planning hearing.
And, and you think he's fine with it now?
Yes, sir. That's my understanding.
He's not here, I don't guess, so...
My understanding is he wasn't coming.
So, I'm assuming he's okay with, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There are no other speakers.
All right, we will close the public hearing and open up for discussion amongst the commission.
Mr. Chairman, since the applicant has met with, with Mr. Brock and, you know, and gotten squared away with any concerns Mr. Brock had, and I'm assuming if they weren't, Mr. Brock would still be here, and so I would make a motion that we approve the application.
Motion made by Commissioner Horsley?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Mr. Whedon?
Our vote at 11 to zero, the commission has approved the application of Hogstooth Precision LLC.
Next one.
Okay, the next item is item number fifteen. Shannon Dupree, Dupree, Inc., an application for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor on property located at 1801 Pleasure House Road, District 4, Bayside.
Hi, I'm Shannon Dupree of Dupree, Inc.
Okay. And can you tell us a little bit about your application?
I have a, I have a small business owner for 20 years. Right across the way, I have Dupree Salonade Spa, and this procedure was unregulated up until August of this year. So, because I'm in a B1, I had to lease a space across the street, which is B2, with conditional use permit. And it's just for microblading, which is like a semi-permanent tattooing, and just one employee, normal business hours, nine to five.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any questions? No. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we have one speaker in opposition, and that's E. George Mims.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission.
Good afternoon.
My objection is to lack of notice. The same problem is occurring across the city wherein, as you all say, stakeholders are not notified, specifically in this case, the church that's right there by it. Morning Star Baptist Church, been there over 100 years. They did not receive any notice. And the church asks that that be brought to your attention. Otherwise, no objection of the business, but it's happening over and over and over wherein our community concerns do not receive notice. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Barry?
They're checking right now. And they're going to give us something.
Could you point out where the church is, Mr. Mims?
It's across, it's on the corner, I believe, isn't it? It's right across the street.
It should be right across. Okay, Pleasure House Road, the church is like right there.
Yeah.
Church is right there.
So, all of the circles on that map are folks that have received the notice about today's meeting.
Mr. Mims, do you know the name of the church?
Morning Star Baptist Church. In fact, we have members of the church here.
I can confirm that a notice went out to 4,800 First Court Road, addressed to Morning Star Baptist Church when the adjacent letters were sent out.
Thank you.
Yes, as generally put in the mail, definitely was a question of whether it was ever received, because that's the concern of the church.
All right, thank you. Are there any other speakers?
There are no other speakers on that application.
All right, we'll close the public hearing and open up for discussion. Mr. Redmond.
Mr. Chairman, I'm well familiar with both of the two properties that the applicant describes. I live in the neighborhood adjacent to it, and I'm well familiar with the spot she currently operates. This is very obviously a use that doesn't fit into her current designation. She's trying to get, as far as I can tell, something as close as possible where the, where the zoning designation is appropriate. My own view is that, you know, it's an entirely benign use in this location. I think very frankly, it would be an improvement to the shopping center from what I've seen of, of what should be her signage. I think it'll probably be a benefit. It's not, it's not the prettiest picture of that shopping center, and I think it, to me, it would be an improvement. I can't find anything objectionable about her use. There are actually some, some very admirable ways in which this kind of use can be helpful, particularly people who, by virtue of chemotherapy, have lost hair in some places and, and would like some help in that regard. So, I certainly have no objection to it, and absent anybody else's objection, would be prepared to make a motion.
Is there anybody else that'd like to weigh in? Mr. Redmond?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the application.
Motion made, motion made by Commissioner Redmond, seconded by Commissioner Weiner. Jimmy, thanks for being able to pull that up so quickly.
Vote's open. Our vote at 11 to zero, the commission has approved the application of Shannon Dupree.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is City of Virginia Beach, an ordinance to amend the 2016 comprehensive plan by adding the CTAC Historic Suburban Focus Area with area description and recommendations.
I'm Carolyn Smith with the Virginia Beach Planning Department, and the proposed CTAC amendment was deferred by the Planning Commission at your August Planning Commission meeting in order to give the public some additional time for comment and input. The Planning Commission held a workshop in October at the CTAC Recreation Center, and then in early November, the Planning Commission held a public meeting, also at the CTAC Recreation Center, where the public was invited to provide you all directly with their comments and concerns. As a, as a result of these efforts, the staff revised the amendments as directed and agreed upon by the Planning Commission. These amendments to the October recommendations include a modification of the name of the suburban focus area to Historic CTAC Suburban Focus Area, adjustments to the suburban focus area boundary to be symmetrical east and west along Birdneck Road, and then there were slight modifications to the recommendations. This amendment certainly has been a lot of work from the Planning Commission, the Planning Department, and the members of the CTAC community, and the Planning Department is recommending to you the adoption of the comprehensive plan amendment for the Historic CTAC Suburban Focus Area. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Smith? Thank you.
Okay. We have one speaker in support of that, and that's E. George Mims.
Forgive my slowness of movement. To the Planning Department, the commission, for the record, I'm E. George Mims, what's left of me. This has been a journey. The CTAC community and the CTAC Civic League desperately wants this approved, and we ask your approval of it. Though unfortunately, for the record, I must reserve the right to address some manner in which some things were done, but those will be addressed in another forum. With that said, we ask your approval of this long, long overdue recognition for the oldest African-American community in the United States, and unfortunately, the first African-American community in the City of Virginia Beach ever to be placed in the comprehensive plan. And there were many that have been destroyed, and that's why we've made this effort. And I must also state for the record, we have serious problem with making any amendment adjustment solely for one particular kind of business, being a mini-storage. When the records of planning shows, there are too many storage facilities in CTAC already. But it is the will of the Board of Directors of CTAC Civic League, and I'm bound to carry out their will. They ask that this be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Any questions for Mr. Mims? Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have one speaker in opposition, and that's Ryan Powell.
Good afternoon.
Please state your name for the record.
Yes, Ryan Powell.
Thank you.
And I have some aerial photos.
If you want to just give me the stack, I can pass them down and save you some time.
Yeah, yeah. For the record, I'm not opposed to the historical district where it's justified with historical significance. I have a problem where it's not justified. As a landowner, within the proposed boundary of the Historic CTAC Neighborhood, I am opposed to the boundary location as drawn on the associated map. The boundary drawn at Bell's Road would serve no purpose and only provide additional unnecessary regulations for landowners at the east end of Bell's Road, which is currently 85 percent office warehouse. The boundary to include the Historical CTAC Neighborhood at Bell's Road has been poorly chosen and dictated without research and documentation. CTAC was originally dictate, depicted on the 1930 Princess Anne County map as being located in the vicinity of Virginia Beach Boulevard. Bell's Road was depicted on this map as Bell's Corner. We have at recent workshop, at a recent workshop presented supporting documents including title searches, surveys, and historical aerial photos for the east end of Bell's Road indicating this area was never residential and not a part of Historic CTAC Neighborhood. Our research shows this area was originally a part of Bell Plantation in the early 1800s prior to becoming the Ives Farm, and later acquired in 1944 by the Farrar Family. The first house ever to be built facing the east end of Bell's Road was in the 1940s by the Farrar Family and can be seen in the 1939 aerial photo provided to you today on the first page. The Farrar Family later subdivided, subdivided a portion of the 12.5 acre property into house lots that, that became the entire south side of Old's Lane. And that's indicated on page three of what I just passed out. I had at the October 12 Planning Commission meeting requested the boundary line for the Historic CTAC Neighborhood be moved northward to Old's Lane, a more legitimate location. Since making this request and submitting the supporting documents, we have not had the courtesy of any feedback or comments from any of, any of the city planners. The arbitrary placement of this historic neighborhood boundary to include the predominantly commercial Bell's Road is not justified and will not serve a benefit to the landowners on this road. As a landowner on Bell's Road, I respectfully request for the Planning Commission to address this issue and answer one simple question. What documented and valid evidence do you have to make the determination that Bell's Road has legitimate historical significance related to the original community of CTAC and that a Historic CTAC neighborhood ever existed on this road? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Powell? Thank you, sir.
There are no other speakers.
Actually, I have one here that was unable to attend, and I'm just going to read this email really quick. Says unfortunately, this is from Mr. Scott Sonier, who lives on Old's Lane. He says, unfortunately, I am once again unable to attend the public session of the Planning Commission due to work obligations. That being said, I did not want my voice to go unheard with respect to the 2016 comprehensive plan amendment establishing the Historic CTAC Suburban Focus Area. I have followed and participated in the process since April 2016 and am aware of the opportunities for comment and the work that the CTAC Community Planning Commission and others have put forth to preparing this document. Having read the currently proposed amendment, I agree to the verbiage, community boundaries, and fully support their inclusion into the 2016 comprehensive plan. An area of concern that I have, that I have gathered from public comments deals with the southern end of the Birdneck Road corridor. Living at the south end of Old's Lane at the proposed SFA map, I would be opposed to the exclusion of the northeastern section of Bell's Road. Doing so would further open the pathway for the encroachment of additional industrial applications, which would not blend well with this section of CTAC. The commission's recent denial of the Birdneck Storage 2 LLC application during the July 2016 meeting was a testament of the Planning Commission's support for keeping and encouraging appropriate land uses in our residential area. Thank you for being our beach representative. Anyway, I was just, I wanted to pass along that he sent me last night, so. If we have no other speakers, I guess we can close this up and for discussion amongst the commission. Carolyn, did you have anything to add before? Mr. Redmond?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to first take the opportunity to thank those members of this body who served on the subcommittee, who have labored for many, many months. We have sliced and diced this a thousand different ways. I don't know that there will ever be a perfect solution. Nonetheless, I think this is a fine solution, and we have accommodated as many various interests and viewpoints as we possibly can, and, and given our responsibility to make a recommendation to city council, I think the recommendation that we're making today is a very sound, very logical, and well-evidenced one. So, I want to thank all of you for, for doing that, and I'd be happy to support the application.
Thank you.
Change.
Anybody else? Mr. Redmond?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Redmond. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Mr. Whedon?
Our vote at 11 to zero, the commission has approved the, the ordinance to amend the 2016 comprehensive plan by adding the Historic CTAC Suburban Focus Area.
Thank you. I will not be here next month, so I congratulate our new officers, and I hope that you give them a very hard time in January for their first opening meeting. So, Mr. Redmond?
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of ten, of nine other folks besides myself, I would like to thank you for two years of very difficult, but very patient and well-guided work on our behalf. I have done that job. Mr. Ripley's done that job. Ms. Anderson's done that job. It's not an easy one. There are a lot of balls in the air when you're sitting in that center seat, and you've done that very well, and we appreciate your leadership, your patience, and your good humor throughout all of that. Mr. Thornton will have very, very big shoes to fill. He's very capable of doing so, but on behalf of all of us, we thank you and appreciate all the extra time that you've put into this. You've done a marvelous job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, you're a big reason I'm sitting here in the chair, so thanks for giving me that opportunity to sit here. Thank you very much. If there's no other business, meeting is adjourned, but do it.
Do it.[1757.52] Do it.[1733.42]